I'd like to call the, or, to order the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission February 11th meeting. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, go ahead and do roll call.
Stephenson.
Here.
Carey.
Here.
Kimball.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Hampi.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Uh, Mr. Manley, do we have amendments to the agenda this evening?
Um, yes, there is. Public hearing, item B, it's the second one on your list there that has been requested by the applicant to be pulled. Do want to make note, though, that they may request at a later date to have this come forward, of which then we would renotice it and begin the process over again.
Okay. Duly noted.
John, I think we had some people who just came in, they might be interested in knowing that the RV Park public hearing was canceled for the night?
No, it is.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kimball. I'm sure they thank you as well.
I recognize Mr. Strelman.
Oh. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and/or presentations this evening?
Yeah, I do have a couple. First one being that we are at that point in time where we would typically elect a chair and vice chair for the commission. That will not occur until the reappointments conclude, so at such time that we have new commission members, then we'll hold that action.
So, as of now, it's just free for all?
As of right now, yeah, we got what we got.
Okay. Duly noted. Any declaration of conflict this evening?
They do have one other.
Oh, sorry.
As, the planning department does have an addition to our staff, so it's been a good addition. Laura Jones, right there, so associate planner, she came from Cootney County, and so we look forward to that addition.
Excellent. Welcome. Glad to have you onboard.
And do we have any, want to mention that we might be having a workshop in March? Is that what you?
Yeah, so we are looking to that in March because we only have one public hearing regarding the comp plan scheduled, to also potentially have a workshop or training that could occur. The actual time of the start of that has not been established, but look for that.
Okay. Anything else on that end?
That would be it.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move forward. Commissioners, any declaration of conflict this evening?
None.
I hope none.
Okay, hearing none, then I will go back to Mr. Manley for the consent calendar.
Yeah, so item A is the meeting minutes from January 14th, 2020. Item B is a reasoned decision for the Wildflower Meadows zone change, file number RZNE 2-2019. Item C is the reasoned decision for the Montrose Zone Change and PUD Amendment, file number RZNE 3-2019, and the PUD-2-2020 file number. The item D is the reasoned decision from the Montrose West Zone Change and PUD Amendment, file numbers RZNE 5-2019, and for the PUD, that's the PUD 1-2020. Item E is the reasoned decision from the Short Green Special Use Permit, file number USE 7-2019. Item F is the reasoned decision from Corbin Meadows Subdivision, file number SUBD 21-2019. And item G is the reasoned decision from Green Meadows East Subdivision, file number SUBD 20-2019. And that would be the conclusion of the items for that.
All right. Unless there's any questions, I would look for a...
I move to approve the consent calendar for January 14th, 2020, as presented.
My second.
Motion and a second, call for a vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda this evening is citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on this evening's agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meetings, we ask that you would hold them until those meetings. Any citizen issues this evening? Okay, seeing none, then we will move to unfinished and old business?
There's none.
Then that brings us to our main point of this evening, and that would be our public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open. First public hearing, Elm Road Zone Change. Mr. Porter, to present.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ethan Porter, planner with the city, here to present Elm Road Zone Change case file, RZNE-4-2019. The applicant is Ace Solutions LLC, who is here tonight to represent Bobby Wilhelm, who is the owner, and the applicant has requested that the Planning and Zoning Commission make a recommendation of approval to the city council for a rezone of approximately 1.11 acres in the city of Post Falls from single-family R1 zoning to medium-density multifamily residential R2 zoning. Looking here at the Kellon, or the, excuse me, the map here, you can see that the project location is hatched in red. Here you have Elm Road running north and south, there's Dawn Avenue running east and west. South of the subject site, you have, it's adjacent to I-90, and then just up north of Elm Road, you get into the intersection of Elm Road and Seltice Way, which Seltice is a principal arterial, so it does have access to that. Looking at the parcel, you can see that it is a single-family home on a large lot, there are no significant topology or vegetation issues worth mentioning, and the water provider would be East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls. Looking at the zone change review criteria for this, we're looking at the amendments to the zoning map, that should be in accordance with the comprehensive plans, future land use map. This will be shown via map on the upcoming slide, and then looking at the next bullet point, you can see that the zoning map should be in accordance with the goals and policies found in the Post Falls comprehensive plan for the amendments to the zoning map. This, taking into consideration that you're surrounded by residential uses, as well as being a proposal for residential use as well. You have proximity to the principal arterial, as I mentioned before, Seltice Way to the north, as well as being somewhat of a buffer for the single-family homes around them having a residential R2 zoning from I-90, from the noise and the pollution. As well as looking at the 3rd 1 Street, classification, traffic patterns, the existing development, future land uses and community plans, as well as geographic and natural features. Currently in R2 zoning, staff has reviewed and came up with not seeing any negative impacts to the traffic pattern or flow for an R2 zoning designation. Here you can see that the surrounding zoning is residential, as you can see in the yellow. The light orange is going to be R3. Currently, I would like to comment that there's an existing duplex directly east of the property across the road, so there is somewhat of a higher density use there currently. That was being grandfathered in. And then, looking at the future land use designation, we can see that the yellow is residential designated for residential, and, excuse me, this is in line with that, being as well the area hatched in black is also future land use designated as residential. Looking furthermore at the commercial, or, excuse me, the zone change review criteria, this isn't a commercial site, nor is it industrial, so the first bullet and the third bullet kind of are not required as far as reviewing this, but we can see that it's not going to be a high density, and it's not going to be a lower density, but this is more of a R2 medium-density zoning, so it does have multiple different uses on the site as far as products that can be there. That would allow, as well with the goals and policies within the comprehensive plan, to allow for kind of a middle housing product as well to be there, that's currently missing in Post Falls, so it would provide that as well. Here you can see the agencies that it was routed to. And then the comments received back were Post Falls Police Department, Cootney County Fire and Rescue, both remain neutral on the proposal. Can I entertain any questions or comments that you may have for staff?
Questions for staff? No? Okay, thank you very much. Bring up the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Roger Glessner with Ace Solutions, 609 North Calgary Court, Post Falls, Idaho, and we represent the owner of this project. Thank you for the staff report. We do agree with the staff report. A couple of things that I would like to highlight, the property, as you can see, is kind of an odd shape, end-of-the-road piece of property right next to the freeway. It is, elevation-wise, is at the same elevation as a freeway, so we, you know, we view this property as a better use to have a medium-density product on there because of that reason. It doesn't, doesn't fit well for single-family residential homes just because of the proximity of the freeway and the noise that comes from that. And as Ethan pointed out, east of that, now the triangle piece there, there's already an existing duplex on that property. Another thing I'd like to point out is going north on Elm Road, it does intersect with Seltice Way, and also if you go west on Dawn Avenue, just out of the picture, it intersects with Maguire Road, which is a arterial, I believe, major collector as well, so we view that, that it has plenty of good, easy access to major roadways. Again, back to the freeway, that's, that's probably one of the bigger decisions, you know, for us to come in front of you for our two multi, or, medium-density zoning is because of the proximity to the freeway, the noise that comes from that. And so with a higher-density product in there, we believe we could put it, you know, kind of back it up to the freeway a little bit, help block out some of the noise, maybe put courts or yards on the north side to help make living there a little bit more feasible. I think that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Any questions for applicant?
So there's an existing structure there?
There is, on the east side of Elm. Elm, right now, stops right at the north edge of the property, but the, the city does come down in there and turn around, I believe it's in an east, or maybe it's in a right-of-way, but we would be improving that portion of road, and on the east side there, that, the home that's shown is, that is a duplex that's there.
That's currently there, is a duplex.
It is, yep, yep.
Anything else for applicant?
What would be the, the plans for kind of privacy or protection for the single families that are backing up to there?
Well, I think we would plan on fencing it. That'd probably be about it, or any, any required landscaping, certainly we would do that. As far as protection from them, I guess we're more concerned with protection from the freeway. Which would help buffer them.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
In favor, neutral, or against public comment? Okay. Okay. Gary Tonto is in opposition, possibly wishing to speak. Okay? All right, if you'll go ahead and come up, state your name, address, and then you'll have four minutes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for hearing my testimony.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Gary Tonto. My address is 445 North Megan Street. It's adjacent to the large cul-de-sac that would be west of this hatched area.
Okay.
My concerns are, at this current point, I, my water pressure is pretty atrocious there, and I have not heard or understood exactly what, the quantity of family residents that are, that are going into this location. It just talks about medium-density or, or multiple, how many's going in here? I mean, if we're talking about two, two, two family residents or something like that, well, that's a, that's a far cry from like an apartment building with 10 or so, you know, families, you know. The, I think the infrastructure there, the water pressure in particular, I don't think it would sustain that kind of, you know, additional, you know, usage. But also, I, in rebuttal to Mr. Glessner's point about the freeway, all those residents are backed up against the freeway, so, and they all, we all live just fine there, so it's, it's not like that would help us or hinder us in any way by having this residence, you know, this multi-use deal there, so. Also, I, you know, I feel homeowners are going to be more respectful to the property values there. You get a single home in that location, they're going to, they're going to be more apt to take care of their property and, you know, and, and maintain that as opposed to a multiple dwelling. You know, you get renters in there, they're probably not going to care for the, for the neighborhood or for the, for the property like you would get with a homeowner. So, that's my concerns, and so therefore, I, I, I'm in opposition to this right now until I hear some effects on it, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it. In regard to numbers, homeowners concerned, water pressures, applicant, do you want to address any of those things, sir?
So this is his rebuttal?
This is his rebuttal, yes, yes. Just to clarify for...
Well, I don't, I don't believe I could address the water pressure problem. I believe that's East Green Acres Irrigation District, they're not the cities, the city of Post Falls, so maybe that's, that's some discussion we should have with them. As far as the, you know, the type of use or the type of building that's going to go on there, of course, with the R2 zoning, we are capable of putting a density of their 12 units on that one-acre piece. By the time you take out the road improvements and some other improvements like that, it's probably, it's highly unlikely we'll get 12 units in there, so it'll be something less than that, is what I anticipate. Yeah, that's, I think that's about it.
Okay. Mr. Glessner, I'm just curious, is that, so on that property, it looks like there's something there, based on the picture? I can't see underneath the red.
Yeah, there is. Is that a manufactured, yeah, manufactured home or older mobile home?
Okay.
Yeah.
And, okay. And do you know if the yard's maintained?
No, not, not much.
Okay.
Any other questions for applicant during rebuttal? Okay, thank you, sir. Questions for staff, before we close things out?
Does there, is, is there a requirement for a buffering between the R2 and the R1, or is that?
No, no, there are two residential uses, so from a landscaping standpoint, it'd be compatible uses, adjacent, no buffer requirement.
Okay. What about on the water issue? If there is, I mean, would that be something that would have to be looked into? People, permits are granted and stuff, for, if there isn't sufficient water pressure to...
We sent out notices through this, notice of jurisdiction. We didn't hear back from East Green Acres of any issues regarding this. Could pose maybe to legal as far as where this goes for ultimate site plan review, at what point do we incorporate assurances from, because I don't believe we got a will serve letter from East Green Acres. We typically get that through subdivisions and site development, not through zone change requests.
And John, just for the record, that is indeed East Green Acres Irrigation, that is their district?
Correct.
Not us, okay.
So at this point, at the zone change, that, they wouldn't necessarily be connected to any more services, they're going to have to come in for permits if they want to add more than the existing residents that's there, is my understanding, and they wouldn't have to subdivide necessarily, but they're going to have to get building permits, I mean...
Correct.
An R2, they could do multi fam, one multifamily, so they wouldn't have to, could, they presumably do more than that, but I'm, I'm assuming that, is that correct, Mr. Manley?
Yeah, it's correct with that.
This is, this is, in essence, this is the initial stage, that before anything goes up, obviously, we're going to see something again, so...
Yeah, when we do a site plan review, a commercial site plan review, we usually get a will serve letter from the providers, if they can provide service, so that, that's where that gets caught there for the site plan review process. Subdivisions, we also require that for all subdivisions as well, so we do, prior to development, get some assurances that services can be rendered.
Yeah.
John, and it's true that, so if they come in for a building permit, East Green Acres Irrigation District, they review the plans, they do, Phil's over there nodding his head, so they review the plans, and so if they can't provide adequate water service and water pressure, then that's on the applicant in order to improve the system so that it does.
Yeah, more than likely, like if it couldn't, well, East Green Acres would provide, as part of like apartment building, let's just say, would say, sorry, we can't provide service where the unit's provided, and we more than likely wouldn't get a will serve letter, and then therefore that would stop that site plan from proceeding.
Okay.
And just to clarify, it, I, I understand that this property is in East Green Acres Irrigation District, but is the cul-de-sac behind it, do you know, is that whole section part of, okay, it, it, okay.
It is.
I was just, the gentleman back there, who lives back there, said he's on East Green Acres, so he was shaking his...
Yeah, I don't have the water service boundaries memorized, so I'm glad he knew.
Okay, you would, okay, okay. So he nodded his head for the record, so I...
Yeah. John, what's the height restriction in R2?
For both, R1 and R2, it's 35 feet.
So that's two stories then, okay.
Okay. So there are safety pieces in place for the water, and I think we have everything else. Any other questions for staff, anything else before we close this out? Going once, going twice, okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Ray, you're right next to me, do you want to start?
So, it, it's interesting because we had these, I guess it's the kind of the comp plan presentations that we've had about, John made a long presentation about the missing middle, and how we've got, we've got some, we've got a lot of apartments, got to go in, and that's perception anyway, we've got property values, home values going skyrocketing. And it's leaving entry level kind of in the dust a little bit, and it leaves the, the recent college graduates without a, a lot of options. And R2 is one of those things that, we have a lot of it in the city, but it's, most of it isn't developed as R2. You know, the whole, I guess the old part of, a lot of the old part of city post falls, I say old part, 60s and 70s and 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, is all that, but it's mostly single-family. There is a whole lot of undeveloped R2, and it's underserved. It's a double-wide right now, and it's not maintained. And the one thing I do know is that if it's a, you know, an R2 zoning gives them the ability to get creative, they can do some townhome-type things, they could do, they can do a, a small apartment, which is two stories, they can't go any higher than two stories, which means that, you know, it's not going to, the profile isn't going to look, it's not going to tower over the adjacent properties. And apartment buildings are generally landscaped, and they look nice, which I think would be a vast improvement over what's there right now. So I think that this is a, an opportunity for us to approve a zone change that will improve a part of the city of Post Falls. Go from a single double-wide that's not maintained to something that is developed and, and maintained.
On the other side?
You know, I, the, the, the water issue does have me a little concerned, but I, I understand that that's something that will be dealt with, and so, you know, that, I guess that isn't for today, for tonight. The fact that there is a multifamily right across the street, and it is the freeway behind it, does lead me in the direction of that an R2, that does make sense there. I, I understand that neighbors sometimes cannot be excited about it, and, and it's, it's kind of a, a roll of the dice, what the developer is going to decide to do with it, and hopefully he decides to do something that complements the community.
Thank you, Jill.
I agree with both Nancy and Ray. My concern kind of was the water, and now that I've been assured that that would be taken care of in the process, I do think it, it would fit there. I think you'd probably have a tough time getting a, a big single-family to come in there with where it's at, so I agree, I think it's a good, it would be a good fit.
James?
Yeah, same thing. I think it gives us an opportunity for this, you know, just over one-acre lot that's not maintained, to, to make it look a lot nicer and more ma, maintained for the future for that area. Yeah, so I'd be in favor for it.
Yeah. It is, it is one of those situations, as Ray mentioned, that R2 is, is kind of a missing piece, and I think that any kind of building coming in there is going to bring improvement, and I would think would positively affect surrounding homes versus negatively affect the, the values on those, so unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion.
I'll, I recommend approval of, let's see, RZNE-0004-2019, the Elm Road Zone Change, finding that's consistent with the Comprehensive Planning and Zoning Code and findings and conclusions contained in the staff report with the designation of R2 zone. Second?
And a motion and a second, call for vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Okay, so moved, and as mentioned previously, the Prairie View RV Park Special Use Permit has been pulled at this time, which leads us to new business this evening.
None.
No new business. Then we have plenty of time for administrative and staff reports.
Fortunately, we don't have one.
I would offer up for your consideration, lest we leave too early this evening. In anticipation of a workshop in the March meeting, or at the March meeting, feel free, if you guys have any questions, you know, sometimes, I know I say things that totally make sense to me, but the rest of the world's like, what on earth is this guy talking about, you know? You know, feel free to let me know if there's something you want me to hit on, or if you have questions about why some things are the way they are, or anything like that, I'd be happy to explain it, I've been doing this for longer than some of you may have been alive. You young whippersnappers like Ray. But, I mean, it's, the problem with having done it for a long time is sometimes you forget what people don't know, and so I want to make sure that if we do some training and some education on it, I'm addressing your questions, not questions that I'm used to people asking necessarily, sorry.
Okay. Duly noted. Commissioner comments, anything for the order?
Just want our council to know he looks a lot younger than 66.
Me and the road.
Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move too.